And welcome to the November 12th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you're here tonight and want to talk to council, please indicate Item I for matters that are to remain to council. You'll see we have a podium system. After setting your name and address, you'll see a green light appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Copies of this ordinance can be found in the city lobby. At this time, please silence your phones, and Councilman Harris will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. What's that? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. You'll do the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, that's what it says.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for how you have graced us with your tender mercies as we opened up our eyes this morning. We thank you for how you continue to walk with us each and every step of the way. Now, we just ask right now that you continue to be our light in the midst of any dark times. We ask that you continue to be our peace in the midst of any chaos. We just ask right now, God, that you continue to be with every council member, city employee, resident within this great city of Newport News, that you continue to bless them with safety, care, and peace. We just ask right now, God, also, that you be with us as we sit beyond this dais and do the work of the city, that you will allow us to continue to look at each and every person we represent and make decisions that will be beneficial to each and every one of them and this great city that we call Newport News. We ask also, in your son's name, that we continue to just be able to disagree dignifiably and that there will be no disagreements in a manner that will not give you glory. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, may I have a motion to excuse Councilman Rob Coleman from this meeting?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, I think we have one very large presentation to make. The first one is a proclamation recognizing the Newport News Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Vicki Hill, Social Action Chair, and elected officers to join me at the podium along with City Council. And if you want, might as well just have everybody. Have everybody.
Everybody?
Yeah, let's do it. Come on. I just said one out of everybody.
Alumni, alumni.
Alumni like gum tree.
All right, I'll do it.
Alumni like gum tree.
All right. Here, let's have you hold it.
Come on now.
We'll have you hold it right here. Okay, just hold it. Tina, can I start?
Tina.
We're gonna go ahead and get started. Whereas the Newport News Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated was chartered on October 26, 1937, originally as the Beta Kappa Chapter and has grown from eight college-educated women to more than 185 active members serving Newport News, Hampton, and surrounding communities. And whereas the chapter has implemented impactful local, national, international initiatives aligned with Delta Sigma Theta's five-point programmatic thrust, economic development, educational development, international awareness, physical mental health, and political awareness. And whereas the chapter promotes educational advancement by partnering with centers and schools, donating diverse books, and sponsoring youth programs. And whereas through its annual scholarship luncheon and May week celebration, this chapter awards scholarships to graduating seniors from each Newport News high school totaling over $20,000 annually. And whereas the chapter remains a strong advocate for civic engagement and social justice, hosting voter registration drives, candidate forums, and restoration of voting rights clinics while actively participating. At this time, I want to invite everyone to the podium, but everyone is already here. So from all of us at City Council, we just are so excited to host everyone here. I'm done with this. Let's now take a photo. All right?
All right, thank you so much.
All right, Brian, tell us.
One more.
Ah, perfect. All right, let me move this.
Do you want us to stand right here?
Is this good? You tell me.
I'm gonna show you do what.
Don't even block nobody.
You wanna come up here?
No, I'm right there.
All right, you're good.
Watch the steps, that's the plan.
I think you're gonna do some more. Wait till everyone sits down.
Yeah, very brief.
It's fine. I'll be here next to you. That's okay. Or you're a whole time. I'll be here next to you. Say what you're gonna say.
I'm gonna, you said something away from me. I'm gonna say, have a seat.
We can stay, because we got more marks.
I'll wait till everybody sits. Right here? Good evening, everyone. My name is Vicki Williams Cullens, and I serve as the Social Action Chair for Newport News Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We are absolutely honored to be here this evening. We do a lot of great work in the city of Newport News, ranging, as he stated, from voter registration workshops to voter restoration clinics, as well as holding candidate forums and voter information forums. Our intent is certainly here to ensure that everyone within the sound of my voice knows that their voice is their power, and you are showing up with your power this evening. So, on behalf of my chapter, we absolutely thank you for your courage to show up and say something about your city. So, thank you so much, and give yourselves a round of applause.
And just let the record reflect that I'm wearing my purple tie as a member of Omega Sci-Fi Incorporated. Much love, much love. The Coleman love. The next presentation this evening is a recognition of the Newport News Public Arts Foundation Artists and Residents Program. The Newport News Public Art Foundation is proud to introduce its inaugural Artists and Residents Program, initiative designed to support emerging regional artists, strengthen community engagement, and expand access to the arts. At this time, I would like to invite Newport News Public Art Foundation Director Becca Sidman and Mr. Dathan Kane to the stage to share a few words. You can stand here. Yeah.
I don't think I have to see Dathan in anything other than black.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Jones, and members of City Council for your continued patronage of the arts. We are so excited to see DK's sculpture here at City Hall, and we can't wait to see what you do next. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the artist, Dathan Kane.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be a part of the first inaugural art program with the Newport News Public Art Foundation. This experience has been transformative and rewarding, seeing my work go from a 2D format to 3D. I've been able to explore different materials and seeing how my work can transcend new mediums. I'm thankful to the community here and the city of Newport News. Thank you.
Let me get everyone in this time. No, yeah. Right in the middle, yeah.
Here we go.
All right. That's a good spot.
Perfect.
Thank you. And I think, let the record reflect, I have one of DK's paintings. It was very expensive, but it was really good.
DK, what house do you own too?
I thought he went to school in Newport, New.
Scratch that from the record. Born in Newport News. All right, add that to the record.
Thank you all for coming. We're gonna now start with the business portion of our meeting. Public hearing, page four, item one, I got it, item E1 is a request to approve resolution requesting the Virginia General Assembly to amend the city charter, Chapter Four, Council Generally, Section 4.01, composition of councilmen and mayor, appointment of council members to office for profit. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close public hearing? So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have one. I just want, for the record, thank you, Councilwoman Vick, for bringing it. It should be council members and mayor, because we do have a councilwoman in our midst. Thank you.
Is there any more, Bob?
Is there any further discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to approve the resolution? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 31 to the deed of lease by and between the city of Newport News and Huntington Ingalls Incorporated for a portion of city-owned property located at 4600 Huntington Avenue for parking purposes. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close public hearing? So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Okay, got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please. Can we reset the vote?
Got it.
Vote is now open.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E4, request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate a deed of open space easement between the city of Newport News and the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close public hearing? So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 31 to the deed of lease by and between the city of Newport News and Huntington Ingalls Incorporated for a portion of city-owned property located at 4600 Huntington Avenue for parking purposes. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Okay, got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please. Can we reset the vote?
Got it.
Vote is now open.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E4, request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyance of city-owned property located at 1225 and 1227 32nd Street to the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority. At this time, are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close public hearing? So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I do have a. Councilman Long?
I just want to point out that this organization that will have the in-use of it is a community land trust, which is to develop affordable housing. Community land trust is something where the entity will maintain the ownership of the land, the homeowner will be to purchase the house, so essentially they get to buy a house 30% less than the market. So, I do applaud the nonprofit to step up and say they would like to build houses in the Newport News community. That's gonna offer some affordable houses for some of our residents. And I would just point out that if they're successful with building it on a time period, there'll be more homes that'll be available through the community land trust bottom. So, do appreciate the nonprofits for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you, Councilman Long. Any further discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E5 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the city of Newport News and Dominion Energy Virginia, granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at 524 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard to support power requirements in connection with the city's Deer Park Ranger Station. At this time, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to close the public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E6, request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Chesapeake Bay Packing LLC for Seafood Industrial Park Parcel 18A located at 900 Terminal Avenue for five years. I see we have one speaker, Mr. Robert Beloga? No? Okay. Okay. No speakers. Motion to close public hearing? So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to just end, the mayor of our, to be able to approve this tonight to be a part of what is eventually gonna be our seafood industrial park, and it's good to be able to be at the meetings, to see us pulling these pieces together and how the citizens will be able to enjoy the seafood market. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item seven is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Chesapeake Bay Packing LLC for Seafood Industrial Park Parcel 19-22A/B located at Terminal Avenue for a term of five years. At this time, are there any speakers?
One speaker, sir, but I think it might just be for questions.
Okay, got it. Are there any questions from City Council? Okay, hearing none. Motion to close public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E8 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Virginia Pilot Corp. for Seafood Industrial Park Parcel 23D located at 370 Terminal Avenue for a term of five years. At this time, I see we have no speakers. Motion to close public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We have a few more seafood industrial park ones, so we'll start with item E9 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Ryan Marine Inc. for Seafood Industrial Park Parcel 23E located at 400 Terminal Avenue for five years. I see we have no speakers. Motion to close public hearing? Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance? So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And the last one, item E10, request to adopt an ordinance authorizing a lease by and between the city of Newport News and Chesapeake Bay Packing LLC for Seafood Industrial Park Parcel 23F located at 500 Terminal Avenue for five years. At this time, are there any speakers? We have none. Motion to close public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance? Move adoption. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item F contains the following items: Page 224, Minutes of the Work Session of October 28th; Page 290, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of October 28th; Page 308, A Resolution Appropriating $2,904,733 of Fiscal Year 2025 State Revenue and City Revenue for Various Schools' Capital Projects; and Page 312, A Resolution Appropriating $300,000 from the Fiscal Year 2026 Bond Authorization for Select Improvements to Newport News Parks and Recs. Do I have a motion to approve items F1 through F4, all-inclusive? Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request for City Council to designate by motion the city's voting delegates and alternate voting delegates for the National League of Cities NLC Annual Business Meeting being held on November 22, 2025. I will defer this matter to City Council for your action.
Do we have a motion?
I do. I make a motion to designate Vice Mayor Bethany as voting delegate and Councilwoman Vick as the alternate backup.
Y'all weren't gonna tell me?
Oh. No, I'm just.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
You wanna switch it around?
Well, I just.
We need a second, then we can discuss.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just really wanted to make everyone aware because of the federal situation going on with the airplanes and getting, and travel, I'm praying that by the time of next week, it will be safe to get to Utah, Salt Lake City, Utah.
Thank you, Councilman.
Understood.
Any further discussion from City Council?
Just a quick question. If she isn't able to go, we have to identify somebody. Well, I don't know who else is going.
She's the alternate.
She's the alternate.
An alternate.
I understand if she's not, if, well.
Yeah, if she's not able to go, we can designate someone.
We'll figure it out.
Any further discussion? Open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Page 351, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution approving and adopting the city of Newport News's legislative program for the 2026 Virginia General Assembly session. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Motion to approve the resolution? So moved. Second. Any discussion? I would just say, for the record, I know there's a lot of work that went into it, so for Jerry Wilson, thanks for all the help. I know we have a long session coming up with a lot of new members, so best of luck, and let us know we can help. Thanks, Jerry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And final item, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of 10.1 acres of property located at 148 Faulkner Road in York County, Virginia for watershed protection. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve the resolution? So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, open the vote, please.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. We have no appropriations this evening. We'll now move to citizen comments. Item I, I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. We'll start with Eric Dante.
Good evening. My name is Eric Dante Pitt. I have core evidence for City Council Court, and I reserve my rights back to special counsel.
Okay, thank you. Just give it to the city clerk, then. Thank you. Next up, we have Mary Hill. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Hill, and I reside at 8316 Crittenden Road in the northern end of Suffolk. And I support anything that has merit and to uplift the quality of life, but based on time, place, and condition, I am here this evening because I have not received or found any redress in the issue with my car that was damaged as a result of the heavy construction that took place on Jefferson Avenue. And I've gone through the protocol of filing a claim and still have not received any redress. I sent an email requesting a meeting with the mayor on October 30, and I did not receive a response. So, I'm here before you this evening for one reason and one reason only, and that is the concern with my vehicle that suffered traumatic impact from the heavy construction that took place on Jefferson Avenue. And that is what led me here today, because it's causing me irreparable harm emotionally and financially.
Thank you, ma'am. And I know that my office directed you to the Risk Management Office, and we've talked to the city manager. Alan, do you want to jump in, or I know Aggie's been working with you as well.
So, I'd be happy to provide.
Thank you.
Council with an update regarding Mrs. Hill's request.
Thank you.
I know that the matter's come before Office of Risk Management. There have been conversations with her. I'm not able or in the best position to tell you exactly the status of those communications, but I do understand that we have been in communication with Mrs. Hill, and I'll be happy to close out this matter with you.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Javon Bennett? And then we'll do Chris Fryer, and then Michelle Bernard, in that order.
Hey, good evening. Good evening. Couple concerns, some of these things maybe I should be talking to Senator Locke or Delegate Price about, but I just want to put it out in the air. I don't have the coordinates with me, so I do apologize, but Saunders Road, like the intersection of Huntersville, I said Huntersville, didn't give them enough right now. Going off of J. Clyde and going down to Saunders and Harpersville, that area right there, there's like a big massive tree. It's not gonna be a problem in about like a month because of the weather, but usually there's a big tree right there, and it's kind of like very hard to navigate with traffic and other things that's going on in that area, so if that can be like a maintenance routine on that to get them trees trimmed, so it could be better navigated with traffic. Another thing in that area is the lighting out there. Another thing in that area is the lighting out there is very dark. There's a lot of elderly people and other people who walk there from 7-Eleven to their houses and to the old folks' homes, but the visibility is very, 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 uh, dark. So I think you guys might want to do something with the lighting out there. Um, one other thing about that area as well is that, as again I say, maybe this should be on a state level, but I feel like bikers, they should be wearing reflective vests. And I'm saying that because when you're driving, it's very hard seeing those people in that dark road. Uh, the little reflector is very, very, very dim, so you're about like right up on them before you actually can see them and get out their way. So we can try to get some type of movement or whatever going on to have bikers at least like wear some type of reflector like those dudes have on, um, doing the tunnel, then you know, there'll be a accident that would be prevented because it's in due time that it's going to happen. Um, another thing in city center, again, I apologize for not having the coordinates, but it's right in front of the, um, Hibachi spot. There's two stop signs, but there's not a four-way stop sign. I think we need a four-way stop sign right there. There's always traffic going on both ways. You can see it. Everybody's been there, and people usually be looking stuck. They don't know what to do. They slow down. It's usually a swerve. I don't know why that wasn't even implemented in the construction, but please, can we get a four-way stop sign right there? I have more things I want to talk about, but I'll talk about it next time because the time is running down. Thank you for you guys' consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And if you want, you can always just give like the full list to the city clerk, and that way it gets to us. But I know we have engineering, and we'll take a look at it, because I've almost been hit at that four-way as well.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Uh, Chris Fryer?
Pryment.
Chris Fryer? It just says Chris Fryer, but I think it's probably Pryment. It's probably you.
Okay.
Yeah, you come up.
Mr. Mayor.
How you doing, sir?
Vice Mayor.
What's up, man?
City Council. Um, I didn't know where to, I didn't talk about this when you passed Agenda Item 25, 224. Uh, it has to do with, I believe, Virginia Law 58.13221, which is classification of land and improvements for tax purposes. Were you looking to bring the property tax for businesses down or vacant lots down or keep them and then bring residential down?
We really don't do like a Q and A-
Oh, I got you.
But I-
I got you.
Because you come here every week, I would just say it's more about a vacant land tax.
Okay.
It's been done in other cities.
Okay. I wanted to add-
Just for you, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I wanted to add on to that. You have a lot of communities here that are HOA condos. They have a covenant over them, and they're in charge of maintaining their own private roads into and out to. Now, they're kind of classified as a medium to high density, so it helps with your tax revenues coming in. But over the last at least five years, the infrastructure costs for these roads that are privately maintained have been an increasing burden onto the HOA dues and that into some of these communities having to keep up with it. I didn't know if you're going to try to get into that law or if that was the law that it was piggybacking on, you could try to add in something where you'd be able to try to figure out for a single-family resident, like if you're going near CNU or that, you, the city maintains those roads. They have a frontage amount. To take maybe an idea of getting a formula together to try to figure out medium and low density and try to figure out a formula for a percent revenue that you could bring those types of communities taxes down so they could alleviate more money for their own infrastructure into like, like I said, it'd be like a critical road going into and out of. So that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Michelle Bernard?
This is our not reserved along the street, and the police has asked me not to park there. I'm trying very hard to follow the city rules and operate responsibly. As a small business owner, I simply want to work, deliver my products, and build my business here in Newport News peacefully and legally. I'm asking for clarity and fairness. If I'm permitted to make deliveries as a part of my license business, I need to know where can I safely and legally do so without being harassed or obstructed by others who are also operating on the street. Thank you all for your time and for supporting small businesses like mine. I am trying to do things the right way. CEO and owner of Shells Kitchen LLC, DBA Shells Kitchen on Wells. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next item will be new business. We'll start with Mr. Manager.
None, sir. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Harris?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Now, I don't have much else, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, sir. Councilman Long?
Same. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, do appreciate all the work that the Deltas are doing in the community. I know when I get home, my mother's in the Demi alumni chapter, so she's going to-
I messed that up. I said it wrong.
You did, did.
Apologies.
I thought I heard you said it wrong.
Kim corrected me. Thank you.
Um, I know she'll be asking me tonight, how does she, how does her chapter get a proclamation? So you might be coming, maybe coming back to you, Mayor, about that. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, I do also want to, um, thank the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta for coming out tonight. It has been such a joy to be able to see you. And I have to say this, being a sorority woman myself, the impact that you all have made in the Hampton Roads area, being able to invest in our young girls in school as well as doing work out in the community to help set the example of what leadership really looks like. So I applaud you for that, and it was great to see you all tonight. That's all I have left for now.
Councilman Ely?
Thank you. I also like to thank the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta for being here tonight. You always see them around in the community doing community service, so it's great to see them be honored for their great work they're doing in the City of Newport News. Also, I'd like to congratulate Sunu on her win for treasurer. Congratulations. I know you do a great job for the City of Newport News. Also, on December the 13th, is it 13th or the 12th? December the 13th, we'll be having a coat and canned food drive feeding at Heritage High School in Newport News. Um, it's a time that we almost come together as a community to do our part. Just a quick story, yesterday I was at 7-Eleven just getting some gas, and a 13 and a 14 O was outside collecting money. And I said, "I'll give you some money, but which, why are you not at home in the van? It's 10:30 at night." They said it was collective money for food and for clothing. So if you could donate to Thrive, you know, I know they're doing a lot in the, a lot in the community, and they also have a food bank in Centerra downtown. But if you're just out in the community and you seen young people at, um, out of the ordinary stores collecting money, try to buy them some food or clothing. So, um, I talked to the two young men, and the community helped. We were able to get them a lot of clothes, got clothes in their bags. Somebody dropped off today to help these young men. Um, and that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, want to say thank everyone, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Uh, like my colleagues have said, definitely want to give a shout out to the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. Sorority Incorporated. I'm so sorry. Um, I will blame that on my 1911 brother who is right here next to me. And, um, shout out to all the Kappa's that are in the house today. Um, but in all seriousness, I know Councilman Ely already mentioned it, but Sunu, can you stand up real quick? I'm putting you on the spot. So, yeah, we can give it up for her again. Sunu, uh, our treasurer-elect, um, Sunu, you are phenomenal. We knew that going into this race. You've done a great job. You've done it with grace. Uh, you have big shoes to fill because Marty Eubank has been a staple in this community for a very long time. Um, I'm extremely confident in what you'll be able to do, and I know the taxpayers will be proud of all the great things that you would do in this community.